Good evening. This is meeting number fifteen. It is now called to order on August first, two thousand and sixteen, at five thirty P.M. in the Thomas J. Smith Council chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Kathleen, Mr. Rockwell, please.
Scott?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming? McCambeau?
Here. Okay, first we have a proclamation of retirement.
This is, I've got to say, this is an absolute honor for me to read this. And I'll read it. Whereas the city of Burlington wishes to honor Officer James Rubeberg for over thirty-one years of service as an employee to the Burlington Police Department. Whereas James Rubeberg has provided the citizens of Burlington with outstanding, loyal, and dedicated service, beginning as a communications officer on November first, nineteen eighty-four. He remained in this capacity until August sixteenth, nineteen eighty-nine, when he attended the Iowa Law Force Academy, four hundred and fourteenth basic class, and graduated on November tenth, nineteen eighty-nine, as a sworn law enforcement officer. During his tenure as an officer, he worked all patrol shifts, was assigned to Criminal Investigation Division, was one of the first dare officers and great officers in the area. Jim was one of the initial Burlington police officers to organize and promote the landlord education training series for area property owners. And whereas James Rubeberg has been a tireless and vital liaison to the Burlington Police Chaplain Corps, and has led by example in his faith as he responds with members to the Corps to provide reassuring words and a shoulder to lean on when citizens receive dark news. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby recognize and commend James W. Rubeberg for an outstanding service and commitment to the welfare and safety of the citizens of Burlington. We, the City Council, wish him sincere congratulations and much happiness in his retirement. Signed and sealed this first day of August, twenty sixteen, Shane A. McCambeau, Mayor. Jim's wife sent out invitations for a retirement party, and on that invitation it says, "Blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called the children of God." And no better representative than that man right there. Congratulations, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you for the applause. No, please, Scott. You know, me and Jim Rubeberg go way back. I met him back when I was just a young little rascal at Youth for Christ. Him and his wife, they put that on, and I don't know how many years that they let me come to Youth for Christ before I got kicked out for being too much of a Christian. I'm just kidding. But it was, he's just been a phenomenal person ever since I first came to know you. And I just want to say this for the record, you did marry up, so that tells you a lot about his wife. But I also have a plaque for you, too. The city of Burlington hereby honors James Rubeberg in recognition and appreciation of over thirty-one years of dedicated service faithfully and loyally serving the citizens of Burlington. Retired August twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, presented by Burlington City Council. And I'll tell you what, we would all love to get a picture with you if your lovely wife would accommodate. Honorable, you need to get in on this action, too. Before you have words, Chief, do you want to say anything? eighty-four, in police communications, and became an officer in August of nineteen eighty-nine. I've had the opportunity to work under six different police chiefs and five different city managers. And when Chief Patton hired me to be an officer, he said, "You will spend your first week on days, and that's probably all the daylight you will see for the next ten years." Fortunately, he was wrong. But I was born and raised here in Burlington. Been very rewarding to serve as an officer in the community that I grew up in. And I've spent most of my career in the patrol division, taught the dare program, the gang resistance program, and spearheaded our police chaplaincy program, which is made up of several local ministers who are in town who will assist us on certain calls like death notifications, infant deaths, DOAs, house fires, suicidal people, and other situations. And thanks to Officer Kirby Corrick, the chaplains now work hand in hand in conjunction with our hostage negotiation team. And I've had a great career with the city of Burlington. I'm looking forward to the next chapter of my life, and I can tell you that Burlington is a great place to live, work, and play. And I've done all three. And I would also like to say, because I won't be able to stay for the whole meeting, that I'm also the vice president of the South Hill Neighborhood Association, and would humbly ask you to listen to what they have to say later on, because I support them, too. Big Chief, would you like to come on, please?
Well, normally, that was a tough situation, because to follow Jim's really a difficult situation. He's a great speaker and just a great individual. But the thing I want to point out is that I feel very grateful to have known Jim. I've known Jim absolutely my whole career. He was in dispatch when I started at the police department, and we had a lot of conversations about maybe someday becoming a patrolman. I thought he would make an absolutely fine patrolman, and he did, probably one of the best departments ever had. In the course of my career, I don't know of any written complaints or any type of complaints ever filed against Officer Rubeberg. He just came in every day, boots up, ready to go to work, doing it with a smile on his face and making a difference. So we owe you a debt of gratitude, and I'm just so grateful to know you and your family. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Chief. Before going further, I just want to say again, you are going to be missed on the Burlington Police Department, but I'm so glad to say that you won't be missed in Burlington, because we're keeping you here. And you don't have permission to leave, sir. All right. Next, we have a proclamation. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proclamation for a salute to our city and county first responders. Whereas blood donors provide a critical lifesaving resource for patients in our community; and whereas Mississippi Valley Regional Blood Center is a provider of blood and blood components to the Great River Medical Center and hospitals throughout our region; and whereas blood donations are greatly needed during the summer months; and whereas volunteer blood donation is an example of the many ways our citizens come together in support of our community needs; and whereas Burlington City and Des Moines County employees are recruiting generous volunteer donors, and so we're inviting all of you to come down to the library on Tuesday, August ninth, from eleven-thirty to two-thirty to donate blood. Whereas on August ninth, two thousand and sixteen, Burlington City, Des Moines County Blood Drive is a special salute to our city and county first responders. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the city of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim August ninth, two thousand and sixteen, to be a salute to our city and county first responders. Blood Drive Day in the city of Burlington. Signed and sealed this first day of August, twenty sixteen, Shane A. McCambeau, Mayor. And I asked him if I could please read this, because this is something that's near and dear to my heart. I have been blessed to be a blood donor for many, many years. I'm close to eighteen gallons, so, and I also have the privilege of driving at mobile blood drives and delivering blood. So I'm very happy to have Chris Hyde come and say a few words about this, Chris.
Mayor McCambeau already told me not to call him Mr. McCambeau, so Shane, and the City Council especially, Tim Scott. Tim has generously donated the special blue lights for our blood drive for all the donors who come to our blood drive, our blue drive, on August ninth. I appreciate that very much. That'll make it special for everybody. And that is our Burlington City and County Employee Blood Drive, which we have five times a year. And this is a special one, because it is a salute to our first responders. So this is the second time, second year we've done that. And this elite group of employees deserve extra recognition. They help us serve, secure a peaceful place for us to live, work, and play, and also provide all kinds of other help for people who need it. When disaster strikes, America always responds by donating blood, which we all really appreciate. But every day is a crisis for some family. I'm choking up for no reason.
Take your time, honey. Take your time. That's all right.
Every day is a disaster for some family. So, and we can't wait until that happens to collect the blood. We have to collect the blood and put it on the shelves for the doctor, at the hospitals for the doctor to orders when they need to. Sorry. So, this is for the first responders, and they also, similarly to the blood needing to be on the shelves, first responders also have to be ready to go whenever and wherever they are needed. They are the first people we call for help in any crisis. So August ninth, blood drive is our second annual salute to our first responders in admiration and gratitude, for all the officers, for all the, admiration and gratitude for all the service they do for our community every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Chris, before you sit down, come here, lady.
That's what I needed.
There you go. There you go. Don't have tears, honey.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. Next, we have three Mayor's Awards. These are really special to me. They really mean a lot, and they should have a different name, Standout Awards or something, because these are people that really stand out, and I'm really excited to be able to present these tonight. The first award goes to somebody that, this guy helps hold the glue together, and I'm proud to know him. He's a fantastic human being. I don't know where he slipped in. Where the heck is he? All right. There he is. There he is. He's in blue. I appreciate you. We appreciate you. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your commitment to your job and your employees is to be commended. You are a person who can always be counted on time and time again. You are an exemplary employee who gets the job done, and the city is grateful for all that you do to make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On August first, two thousand and sixteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to my friend, Brayden Hill. Come on, Ben.
I want to thank everybody involved, Mayor Shane, I appreciate it very much. I had this incredible speech written, and I couldn't find anybody to help me carry it all up, so I'll leave it short in that I really do enjoy my job, and I enjoy working for the city. And this actually makes many things worthwhile, and I do certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brayden. It's times like this when I love having this position, I'll tell you. The next Mayor's Award goes to somebody that I've known ever since I can remember, and this is the type of person that, well, he'll just help anybody. I seen him one time help a guy, actually, that guy was me. That he had just got out of church, had a suit on and nice clothes. He takes his suit coat off and climbs underneath my car, you know? I mean, that tells you the type of person he is, and I always joke around, and I say, "There's not anybody in this city that doesn't have, that can't say that he helped him or has a relative that he didn't help." And he just does it because that's the type of person he is. So I'm excited to give this award to my friend tonight. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. You have been a shining light in this community and have given of yourself so freely for so many years for so many people. Your positive attitude, commitment, and love for all people help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. You are a fantastic person, and I'm blessed to know you. On August first, two thousand and sixteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to Mr. Bill Chaplin. Would you come on down?
If I catch you without it, that's fifteen of the merit points.
Mr. Chaplin, would you have a word, please?
I can't find a word to say.
Well, come up with something.
I'm Bill Chaplin, and I'm not a public speaker or whatever, but all I can say that I was raised right as a kid, and this is the way I was trained to do. You do what you can for others, and good deeds will come to you. It's just a part of me. I just love doing it, and I love helping people, you know? The smiles they get after, "Oh, he came over and he did this for me." The smiles they get, and I appreciate this award. I don't normally get things like this, but I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You deserve it. You deserve it. Thank you, sir. I noticed you brought your daughter down here with you. It's good to see her. It's good to see your daughter with you. That's his wife. All right. This next award goes to, she just does a fantastic job in the community. She's here, there, and everywhere, and she's just all about it, and I'm excited to present this award to this next recipient. She's great, and when I grow up, I want to be just like her, but I want to be a him. You know what I mean? All right. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your positive attitude and commitment to this community has been outstanding. As Miss Burlington, you have represented and worn the crown well. When I grow up, I want to be just, I can't believe I forgot, I put that on there. When I grow up, I want to be just like you, except Mister, not Miss. You help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On August first, two thousand and sixteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to Paige Segworth. Would you come on down?
First off, thank you, and it's been an amazing, about six months, being able to serve the community as Miss Burlington. This is my community, so it's been absolutely great to take my service to the next level and get more recognition. And although my reign is ending in about a month, and the words of my sash may be changing from Burlington to something else, I hope to still be involved in the community and still get as much support and love from you guys, even though I may not be Miss Burlington anymore. Thank you.
You will get it. Thank you. Did she teach you how to wave? No, I still, hey, show us how to wave again. She's got a demo. She's got a demo. It's a process. I'm learning. Fantastic group tonight. Thank you all, and it's just, it's always an honor to give something to wonderful people that are so deserving. Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item One, consent agenda, having been discussed or considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda. It will be considered separately. Tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have five resolutions. The first is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the two thousand and fifteen Cascade Sewer and Sanitary Trunk Extension. The second is a resolution approving purchase of replacement equipment for traffic control along Roosevelt Avenue. The third is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for resource enhancement and protection, the REED program, for the Flint River Trail along the riverfront in the city of Burlington, Iowa. The fourth is a resolution authorizing the filing of applications for the two thousand and seventeen Certified Local Government CLG Grant Round for the Development of Historic Design Guidelines. The fifth is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the EPA for FY seventeen Brownfields Area Wide Planning, the BFAWP Grant Program by the city of Burlington, Iowa. We also have three public hearings set for August fifteenth. The first is a consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand and sixteen West Avenue and West Burlington Avenue roundabout, rise dash RM dash zero nine seven seven six forty-three dash seventy dash twenty-nine. The second is consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter one fifty-five International Building Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. And the third is a consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of the Chapter one fifty-six International Existing Building Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Mayor Protim?
We have one appointment, Grant Bartow, to the City Planning Commission, an important commission, and we thank him for his service.
Excellent. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent? Okay, I see none. Counsel?
I'm okay.
Okay.
Your Honor, I move we approve all items listed under Item One, Consent Agenda.
Click it. Let's take it, then, Kathleen.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
First, we have a presentation from Alliant, the Alliant Annual Report. Nancy, would you come on down?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to say, there's such a good vibe in this room tonight between Mr. Rubeberg and Chrissy sharing with the first responders and then recognizing with the Mayor's Awards. There's just a lot of good things happening, and I'm pleased to kind of continue that trend of positive things to talk about. I like to come annually and just share with you some of the things that we're working on in the community. And actually, two thousand and fifteen was a pretty active year with our foundation support. For the city of Burlington, we helped with fifteen hundred dollars at Crapo Park for the outdoor classroom. We helped with some signage over there. And our new focus with the foundation grants are families, education, and environment. And, you know, I was glad to see them kind of pick some things that were really going to benefit in the community. We were really, over the last few years, there's been a lot of things that we've gotten behind, and it's tough to kind of leave out things where we used to do, like for symphonies and stuff and the arts, but it's just more focused now. The Public Library also benefited. We had two thousand dollars for Greater Burlington Teens Read. We helped them with some furniture for their teen department, their little hangout area. And then the Notre Dame Foundation, we had two thousand and five hundred dollars for materials for two new science labs. So all of these were great projects, and we're happy that they keep us in mind when they're doing things. We had some additional smaller ones with after-school programs and the high school trap team and the Fourth of July and some of those types of things. And then I recently had the pleasure of delivering a check to the Salvation Army for a refrigerator for the food bank, and that was really a good project, and again, it's going to help, you know, the community and families. And of course, it was energy-efficient refrigerator, which is what we want to see. And we're still do have two operating centers in town. We have Burlington operations on Roosevelt. We've got about forty-two people there. And then also at Burlington Generation, we're holding strong at forty-one employees out there. And one of our new employees is a member of the Homebase Iowa Program, so we're trying to, you know, support veterans kind of re-entering the community after their service, so we're happy to see that. Some of the other things I personally worked on with the city this year is I've been doing some work with Brayden and Nick. The next time I see Mr. Farnow, well, that's tomorrow, but very shortly, in a couple of weeks, I'll have a check for a hundred and eighty LEDs at one hundred dollars apiece, so that added up to be a very nice rebate. And those LED lights, you really made a good choice there. Not only are they safer and better, but it's less maintenance, and they're going to look nicer, too. So that was really a good project. The other thing, we had a nice VFD rebate at the water plant, and that was a direct result of an audit that we did last year and identified a way to save, and they made that investment. I also did an energy audit at Don Fitting's wastewater plant with Tim Myatt, and I was really pleased to see that we barely identified anything, which means that when that plant was built, they really did things right, and we found just a couple little opportunities, but that is a very efficient facility. And I would say it was one of the leanest audits that I've ever come through with hardly anything to address, because it's so excellent. But we also did an assessment of the opportunity for the depot, and if everything verifies right, the technologies that they chose for the depot remodel will qualify for around twelve thousand dollars. We'll verify at the end, just in case they added something or changed their mind on something. And we did also open up a project for the police station remodel, so the chief submitted the application, and we'll work with the design team right along there and make sure that we got that rebate going for them, too. So there's a lot happening. We've also made some significant investments in infrastructure. You know, we've done a lot of gas work in this town, and it's been, you know, challenging with the infrastructure and some of the underground work. I know it's not really convenient, but once we get that all addressed, it'll be there to serve for years. And we've spent just over a million dollars, a million thirty-three thousand is what we spent on gas. And electric was seven hundred and twenty-three thousand. We've also continued to be a taxpayer, and in Burlington, our taxes were six hundred and fifty-six thousand, and in Des Moines County, they were just under two million at one point nine million dollars. The city, while they're participating in rebate programs, I'm also pleased to advise that the other customers, our residential customers and our industrial and business customers, are also participating, and we issued eighteen hundred and fifty-six rebates last year for an incentive payout of six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And the dealers, these are the ones that help us promote efficient air conditioners and things like that. They have a program for dealers, and they also realized forty-three thousand dollars. We did some tree planting last year, nineteen thousand dollars for trees in the right-of-way. And then last year, I remember David Toyer from the Economic Development was here, and he talked about how it would be great if you guys would help him support a labor shed study and a housing assessment. And I'm glad that everybody thought that was a good idea, because we've contributed thirty-five hundred on the labor shed and another fifteen hundred dollars on the housing assessment, and having those, that data in place, is going to really help them make some good decisions with respect to some of their goals. So we're really happy to do that. And I think that's really kind of takes me through our partnership for the year, just trying to keep in touch with the community on various fronts and, you know, do our part to kind of check in every once in a while, and, you know, just thank you for the time.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
I was talking to my brother. I said, "Nancy's coming down." He goes, "What are you so happy about?" I said, "When Nancy comes, checks come with her."
There you go.
I'll tell you what, we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. My pleasure.
All right. What do we have? Mr. Scott?
I have a motion for preliminary adoption in the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Gordon Street right-of-way located west of Bomberger and a portion of Bomberger Street right-of-way located south of Monroe Street.
Second. Mr. Tisland?
No changes from the previous reading. Again, this was a request by the property owner in two thousand and five, Cliff Road, to vacate a portion of Gordon Street right-of-way that is, serves primarily as a private drive to his residence. He owns property on the south side as well as on the north west side of the right-of-way, and vacating a portion of Bomberger Street right-of-way that is... and vacating a portion of Bomberger Street Right-of-Way that is unused and unmaintained right-of-way with a lack of ability for future travel or access through the right-of-way. The applicant has a desire for ownership and maintenance of these right-of-ways, and they are of no use to the city of Burlington. So on June 21st, again, the City Planning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of the vacating of the described right-of-ways.
Do you have any questions or concerns? Anyone from the audience? Sina, counsel?
Your Honor, I have a motion to amend.
Can I make? Yes, sir.
I have a motion to amend the motion for preliminary adoption in the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Gordon Street Right-of-Way located west of Bomberger Street and a portion of Bomberger Street Right-of-Way located south of Monroe Street to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption in the second reading and for final adoption of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Gordon Street Right-of-Way located west of Bomberger Street and a portion of Bomberger Street Right-of-Way located south of Monroe Street.
Second.
Kathleen, can we take a vote on the amendment, please?
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Can we vote as amended?
Okay. Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Your Honor, a motion for preliminary adoption in the second reading of an ordinance rezoning the property located at 2635 Mount Pleasant Street from C2 General Commercial to R4 Multi-Family Residential Zoning District.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Tisland?
This is property requested by the current owner, developer of the property. This has existing two threeplex residential units on the property. The past zoning of it was a C2 general commercial. In 2001, they were approved by city council to construct 15 condo units under the zoning designation of general commercial expanded, which is no longer a zoning district. Under the current zoning classification of C2 residential is not allowed use. So based on their desire to expand the existing residential development, they had to go through a rezoning. The City Planning Commission held a meeting on June 21st and voted four to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning to the city council. Based on the surrounding land uses, the existing land use as residential and following the future land use map designation. One condition of the rezoning is to maintain a 50-foot open space on the north side of the property along Mount Pleasant Street that could not be used for residential purposes. This will allow construction of three additional threeplex units by the developer-owner of the property.
Anybody from the audience have any questions or concerns? I see none. Lovely audience tonight. Counsel?
Your Honor, I also have a motion to amend on this hearing ordinance. The motion to amend the motion for preliminary adoption in the second reading of an ordinance rezoning property located at 2635 Mount Pleasant Street from C2 General Commercial to R4 Multi-Family Residential Zoning District to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption in the second reading and for final adoption of an ordinance rezoning the property located at 2635 Mount Pleasant Street from C2 General Commercial to R4 Multi-Family Residential Zoning District.
Second. Excuse me, second.
Kathleen, would you like to vote on the amendment, please?
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
And now as amended?
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Well done. That went right along.
Your Honor, I have a resolution establishing two no-parking areas in the 500 block of Terrace Drive.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. McGregor?
Nick McGregor, Assistant City Manager for Public Works. Before you have a resolution approving a no-parking zone on Terrace Drive from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on school days, this is based on a request from the schools from June 22nd. Public Works Operation Manager Chris Clemens did some investigation, went and talked to the property owners, eight of them. Five of them were against it, one did not give an opinion, and one was for it, and another was not able to be contacted. The Public Works Department did not see any benefit nor disadvantage from this parking. The only advantage was with the fire department with their two large aerial units. So if there's any other questions? The requested zone is the one in the blue, and then this next map is approximately 370 The next map shows the various different parking situations.
Make sure we have an idea, what are there, about 15 to 20 parking spaces there, you think?
I would say that a parking space is on average about 25 feet. So I would say there's probably 12.
Okay.
If you would like to go to the next map. Shows the various different parking situations. Green is the only area where parking is allowed at any time. Then the various different colors have different time zones based on the times when they've been implemented over the years. And so the green section on Terrace Drive where the white arrow is pointing is the requested area to be changed.
Do I have any questions?
Nick?
Yep.
Is there anybody from the school that appeared to?
They said they would be here, but I don't know anybody from the audience that would be.
Did they?
Mr. Cohen said he would be here, but I didn't see him.
Did they give you any indication of why they wanted this?
To try and handle their parking situation, to control it a little bit better, security-wise.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody from the audience with any questions or concerns?
Thank you. I am a homeowner on Terrace Drive, and I did send an email to all of the city council members. My concern is that we do use the parking on the street. My husband and I both have work vehicles as well as personal vehicles, so we, that's really the only place that we can park, and besides our driveway. But with the times that they have, that they're going from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., we would have to go out and move our cars and readjust with that. I think the biggest thing that the problem I have is that the Burlington High School has never utilized all of their parking spaces in the 15 years that we have lived there. And I guess I don't first, I don't see why they need to, I mean, if they're not utilizing their parking lot to its fullest extent, why they would take parking away from us. We are taxpayers, and I think that we should be able to use the areas around our homes, but...
Could you give us your name and address?
My name is Dawn Paragus McCune, and I live at 508 Terrace.
Very well. So if the time was different, instead of seven to five, let's say eight to four, would that make a difference to you?
That would probably, that would probably help a little bit. I don't, I mean, I don't know what, I've lived in Burlington all my life, and they have actually not allowed parking at some points on this area, and they have allowed parking in my whole, in my, the times I've lived here. I mean, they've had, they have the parking passes, so I don't, I guess I don't understand why they would need to take away all of our on-street parking, but the times may, may help a little bit.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience, questions or concerns? Counsel?
I guess I don't see why it has to be 7:00 in the morning. You can make it anytime you want, and so if you make it 9:00 to 4:00, the student's still not going to be able to park there because he's got to be in class by 8:15 or whatever, so obviously you won't be able to park there. You won't want to park there, she, he or she. And I do know, just from historical, you probably remember, going to Burlington High School there, there was a time when students, that parking lot was overflowing. There was, there were not enough parking spaces for as many kids that wanted to drive to school. So that's probably why that became a popular place for particularly sophomores who were 16, because they couldn't get into the parking lot. They weren't allowed to get into the parking lot, so they had to find a place to park. Now, since the population is down so much, there's, you go by there during school days in there, you'll find a lot of empty parking spaces in that parking lot. I drove by there today, and there was one vehicle on that stretch of road at noon. So, you know, I don't know. I'm kind of a quandary here. I don't see why it needs to be, but I can understand why it is, so why it does need to be. I just, I don't like the idea of 7:00 in the morning, because I think that would help alleviate some of their problem. If we could make it, if we're going to do it, if we could make it later than 7:00 a.m.
I wish the school district was here for, you know, give us their side and their reasoning. I know they stated it to some of the staff, but I just wish they were here to state it to us themselves.
Why don't we, why don't we continue this and get the answers to our questions from them and ask that question if it's going to make any difference if we're to adjust the times and how it would affect the neighborhood and how it would affect the school and their position.
Nick, I don't, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, for me, I'm, one, I know that when I went to school there, there was no parking allowed on that street. And second, I don't, I'm not a big supporter of providing on-street parking for anybody. But there's, I mean, when you've got parking established like this for a neighborhood, not just a school, but for a neighborhood, it makes it a little more difficult to have that position. So let's find our, let's continue this and find our answers.
You know, that graphic that Nick had up, some of it is 7:00 to 5:00, and some of it's 8:00 to 10:00, and some of it is, you know, so there's different times for different areas already, anyway.
We can, we can put off, I just, I just want to say for the record, I don't think my mind's going to change. I just, I don't want to overstep. To me, I just think it has to be something that really, there's a beacon light, and I don't see the beacon light. I would just, I think they need to take care of their issue at the school, but is everybody good?
Yes.
Your Honor, make a motion to continue the resolution establishing two no-parking areas, 500 block of Terrace Drive to our next meeting.
Have a second?
Second.
Kathleen?
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay, this will be continued, and I thank you for coming down.
Thank you. This way you get to come back to another meeting, so.
Get familiar with city hall.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the final plat of the board and subdivision.
Second. Mr. Tisland?
This is a three-lot minor subdivision, plating and, or subdividing an existing lot into three separate lots. This is in a R2, single-family transitional zoning district where the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. The three lots will all be approximately 12,500 square feet, so approximately double the minimum lot size for an R2 area. This map shows there is an existing house on the corner lot. They are removing the garage and replacing with access off of Steuben Street, and this will allow two full lots to the south on the east side of Cliff Road, somewhat mirroring lots to the, on the west side of Cliff Road as well. So all the lots will meet our minimum standards for zoning and subdivision, and will allow further development in this area.
Any concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Do it.
Okay, let's take a vote.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay, nice to have it. You guys have been fantastic tonight. Let's keep it going. This is the time we will entertain comments from the audience. If there's any issues that you have before we, that we have not addressed, we'll give you a chance to do so. Mr. Tisland? Thanks again for coming down, Braden. Appreciate you.
My name's Paul Gonakis. I am Vietnam veteran, service connected with post-traumatic stress disorder. Now, I've been picketing the Burlington Police Department for the last four days. The chief seems to think that I'm a drug dealer. I asked to see him, he refused to see me, then I went to Mr. Farrell here, and Mr. Farrell made appointment with him, and he again, straight up lied to me. What I'd like to show the city council is this. I paid Christine Breakbill $19,000 of attorney's fees that they took from me at Catfish Ban. They passed that law July 2010, and I paid her all. Now, my MOS is 11 Delta 10, so you understand I'm a recon scout, search the vehicle and get them. Now, all that's been going on now is informant cars, follow me, I'll turn around and I will follow them. Undercover cars, Lee County, Henry County, Wiza County, Story County, Polk County, dealer plates. I go out in the park, and as I'm coming into the park, I see a black utility vehicle which has Lee County plate. Now, I've got high-powered binoculars. When I went through the park, there was two people sitting in it. When I came around, I didn't lose sight of them. I stopped right in front of the vehicle, and I got out and looked right down the windshield and went in the backseat.
Stay over by the microphone so we can hear you. Is that way?
They were down in the backseat hiding. Then they took off over toward the swimming pool, and I followed them over there, and then I stopped, and I wrote their number down. This has been consistently an ongoing fishing expedition by Mr. The Chief. Now, I would just like to show the city council, there, I gamble, this ticket right here is $40,000. It cost me $15. I've got some here, just to search, so you see them. You see how thick that is? These are jackpots, and some big ones.
I don't know if I would make that public, but all right.
I want to make it public because he thinks I'm a drug dealer, get my money drug dealing. The reason why I'm making this public is I gamble.
Okay.
And I want the chief to leave me alone. I suffer PTSD, and this is because of stress. I talked to the major, and he gave me the runaround, and then he didn't want to see me to protect and serve. I've got something to say about that. In August 2015, I was assaulted in my yard, and I got charged with it. Went to court, he pleaded guilty, they dropped it on me. But here's what I got to say. When I was assaulted, the police, I could see their smiles on their face and everything. They were there to help me. Two weeks before that, I asked if they would arrest this man, and they didn't. Then he assaulted me. I got right here a police car. Can I approach?
Yes, sir.
All you have to do is hit that, and you'll see them harassing me by shining their lights on my house.
Was it video?
Yeah, it's video. You'll see the time and date and everything there. You'll see a police car pull in front of my property and throw the lights on my property.
Did you want to see it?
Did you see it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Also, Sean, the same person that assaulted me, two police officers came up and went to a complaint two houses down. When they were done, I've got this on camera, too, the police cars. The same guy that assaulted me asked them if he could spray water and sweep my yard and everything, and this guy was drunk, and they were laughing and everything. What is going on here?
Okay.
I don't need Paul Harvey. I live on North Eight. There is an unsolved murder on... There is an unsolved murder on Iowa Street. There is an unsolved murder on Franklin Street. You'd think the police would have better things to do. That's why I brought this down to show you. I'm not a drug dealer, I've never had drugs on my record or anything, and I'm tired of being harassed by the chief. Mr. Beer? He thinks everything's funny. I had a conversation with him for two hours, and he, he was laughing and everything, wasn't even paying attention. That's why I'm bringing it to the city council.
Uh, I, we, I can tell that you're frustrated and...
Yes, I'm frustrated.
And, uh, I can't, I, I don't know, I, I don't know about, you know, the shining lights or anybody following you or anything like that because I, because, you know, how do I, how am I supposed to be able to tell?
Okay.
But here's my, here's my point. We, we can't, we can't do anything from right here. We can't, we can't do anything or make any decisions over this. This is something that I'd probably like to sit down and talk with you, just one-on-one with, and, and hear you out. So that's what I am gonna do, I'm gonna have you call, and I'm gonna make sure you set up something and I can talk with you.
A lot of those cars in there, sir, I wrote the numbers down. They followed me, I followed them. I showed a lot to Mr. Farrell here.
Okay.
I just don't make up nothing. They'll pull right, uh, oh, wait a minute. I go doggies, they pull right next to me. I go suntanning. I go suntanning in the park, and a detective walks right up on me and tries to see what I got. I got a little radio and suntan lotion.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make some time for you, and I'll, I'll talk to you, uh, I'll talk to you.
Sean, do you see the difference from drug dealing to gambling?
Well, if you're willing that much.
I make more money doing this than if I was gonna do that. I won't do that because I would be jeopardizing my, uh, service connection. They pay me twenty-nine oh-six for that service connection, hundred percent, and Social Security pays me a thousand. That's damn near four thousand dollars a month. And the chief made a comment to one of his police officers, Mr. Gonakis, it's too much money. It's none of his business what I have.
Okay, well, I don't wanna, this isn't a court, and I don't wanna do a, say over this, but...
I had to bring it to somebody, so I brought it to you guys.
Okay.
I will go back picketing every day, too. I'm tired of it.
Well, hopefully we can get, we can get you squared away.
Because I talked to a higher official, and he says you need to talk to your doctor, and the doctor needs to get a hold of him and tell him to leave me alone because of the stress. He's causing more stress on me, and I don't need it.
Okay.
I've served my country for all of you people. Honored discharge. I've been to a lot of places in Vietnam, Cambodia, Tedafans and everything. I fought hard, and it takes people like me to do that. I don't need to deserve what the police chief is doing to me now. That is straight-up harassment, if I've ever seen it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make some time for you. I'm gonna make some time for you. We're gonna get schedules lined up where I can sit down and talk with you. And I, I do wanna say this before you sit down. Thank you for your service.
Yes.
It is appreciated. Thank you, sir.
All right, don't forget your phone.
Yeah, I'll come and get it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Kathleen, make sure I get, get some time set up to speak to Mr. Gonakis sometimes. Is there anybody else from the audience with a question or concern?
My name is Vincent Copeland. I live at four oh-five South Central here in Burlington. I am also the president of South Hill Neighborhood Association. Earlier this year, um, beginning of summer, we put on a pool party, which you, the mayor, and Jim were both there at the party, and we packed the pool. Over seven hundred and fifty people, great time.
It was a party?
It was. It was great to see family and kids out, and I stressed the family part of it because I saw a lot of parents with the kids. It wasn't just a pool full of kids, it was parents with the kids. We, since then, we have been approached by private citizens, not companies, like are brought to you there and to Jim, thinking that maybe this would go on if we could get companies to, uh, sponsor a day at the pool, which would be perfect, would've been perfect for us and still would be. What we have had done is private citizens, individuals, have come to us, which we are not, uh, we are not in no way in control of this. They brought it to us because we did the first one, and they thought that maybe we could help them do it. And I'm speaking of hundred-dollar donations, two-hundred-dollar, three-hundred-dollar donations. Not any money to cover the whole day, but just concerned citizens wanting to provide a day at the, at the pool for our kids and families. Uh, as in the email I sent to all of you, I am very concerned about, uh, the condition of the city, what we do for our children, especially. Our children are the ones that are gonna take care of us later in life. We must do something to provide at least some sort of recreation for them during the summer. And like I said, this is not, this is not a South Hill project. This is a Burlington project. We just got wrapped up into it because of the first one that went on, and it went on so big. So many people came to us and said, hey, we'd like to keep this thing going. And that's all we wanna do. All we wanna do is keep it going. If we could keep it going with the help of the city, we will. I thank you for your consideration on this project. Please, let's help our kids.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
I'm not done yet.
Did you have any other discussion or questions that you had for South Hill about the five hundred dollar swim day? While we're here?
There were no discussions because we haven't met again, we're, we're just meeting now. But, um, I, I just, I just wanna say, as far as the discussion goes, I, I feel the same as I did before. I, uh, I just, I feel like this is an opportunity to, uh, to do something that isn't really expensive, but yet I, I think it pays in dividends, and, and I'm still, I'm still for that. I didn't see any, uh, I didn't see any drawbacks from that.
I'll leave you with this. I think that what we're asking for is uncommonly normal. Uh, nothing about it makes sense. Um, so I want you to think about it as, um, a gift for the children in our community. Um, it is a gift of principle and a gift of love. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is set to be on the next work session. It'd be, the, the way it was directed from, from the last work session was for it to be presented as a resolution establishing a rate at eight hundred dollars, and that's, will be the, for the, for the day at the pool. That certainly will be up for discussion about how council wants, if the council wants to make any adjustments off of that. But at least as a starting point, that's what's set up. Correct.
Thank you guys for coming down tonight, though. Any other, yes, sir?
Hello, my name is Mike Crowner, I live at twenty-six oh-four Kirkwood.
You can lift that up a little bit.
I have not been following this pool thing really close, um, but I think it's a great community thing. Dana does great things for this town, and I am here to, um, present a check for twenty-one hundred dollars, if you guys will take that, because from my understanding, that is what it's costing you guys. And I would like to step forward because the whole thing about this is Burlington is a great place to live, work, and play. And our kids need to be off the street and have family time and enjoy themselves.
Give me a hug, Crowner. Woo! Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. That's just phenomenal. I may be biased, but I feel like we've got the best citizens in the state of Iowa right here in Burlington, and, uh, that just goes to prove it, that's... All right, I'll start ramping. Counsel?
Ready?
About to do the thing that the lady at the blood bank did, you, you just got me.
Yeah, if that doesn't give you goosebumps, I don't know what will. I mean, we received a lot of, um, a lot of emails in support of the South Hill Neighborhood Association, being able to do things like this. And it's, it's hard to say no when we're talking about our kids and our families. Um, and I think it's important that, you know, putting them together instead of just, you know, kids. But I look forward to more discussion on this.
Any other comments from the audience?
Leo Hollowell, twenty-eighteen South Thirteenth Street. Uh, first, I want to comment, it's like, uh, at least I, I acknowledge him personally, but thanking publicly for one of the council members, acknowledged my email that I sent in regards to the support of the South Hill Neighborhood Association. And I've known Dana Atkins for, uh, we won't say how many days. We'll just leave it at days and everything, and she's been a, I mean, I'll tell you what, she's a go-getter, and I see the, the benefits there. We've gotta invest in the youth of this community, they're our future. And that's, seeing to me, that's always what gets brought up time and time again, but it doesn't... This is a chance, and of course now with that twenty-one hundred dollar check, that's, that made me feel, I was like you, uh, Mayor Shane, at, uh... And my second comment I just wanted to make, and I wanna applaud, there's at least four people in this room that went to Baltimore, Maryland about a few weeks ago, uh, with, uh, others of, of the county. And as, uh, I am a SERP member and Sky Warren, I am also deputy chief on the executive board of, uh, SERP and Sky Warren. Uh, I've got a real compassion for what I'm doing. Uh, I guess I, I'm love, I love it because I can serve my community. I, it's always who I've been. I've, I go way back, forty years ago, going from a volunteer firefighter, volunteer police reserve officer, volunteer on a rescue squad, paid and volunteer, uh, ambulance EMT. Uh, and I've been hospice volunteer, nursing home volunteer, and now Sky Warren, and, uh, especially SERP because one of the things I really reflect on, and I've been this since, was five years ago, being in Jopin, Missouri within thirty-six hours after the tornado hit. And Pat, Mayor is also my pastor, and I made a remark to him, and I hope he, I get proved wrong, and I'm gonna say this on record, I get proved, I felt, you know, Jopin community twice the size of Burlington, but I saw so much pulling together, and I, I don't know why, I just have this feeling. I don't think the city of Burlington, the people have pulled together. I'm hoping I prove wrong. And like I say, I like what, what they went out there, but especially give accolades to Gina. She is a wonderful lady to work with, and, uh, I'm hoping I get to work with her for more years to come. And, uh, but to see, and in the scenario that, uh, Jim Whitaker got put together for next spring, uh, it's, I, 'cause we never know when a disaster's gonna hit, and, uh, and it's, I've seen, just, just even last year, Cameron, Illinois, uh, and that particular storm went right over us. I'm not spotting, I'm seeing the rotation. We had a wall cloud go over us three rotations and right overhead, and it's scary when you're out there unprotected. And, uh, and then find out it does that much damage in a small town. So I just wanna say, I wanna acolyte, like I say, for you, Mayor, and, and Jim for now, and, uh... Thank both Mac and Doug. Yeah, we're out there, and different representatives of all the different, different levels of community, whether it's county or city employees, but business people, and it's, uh, I'm, I just hope the city council and continues to put their support and, uh, behind in helping to maybe put pressure on of helping get more funding into the EMA that we sorely need, and, uh, and, 'cause the EMA is not just county, it's, 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 well, Burlington is in county, and it's involved. And done a lot of work, uh, with SERP, volunteer work with helping out, especially with Burlington PD and the West Burlington PDs with traffic control, and I just wanna give them a big salute on record.
Thank you. Thank you, Leo.
Any other, uh, comments or concerns from the audience? Mr. Tisland? Counselor?
Ah, um, let's see, I have a few things. Um, I wanna thank the South Hill Neighborhood Association for coming out and voicing, you know, your concerns with the, the pool. Um, also, this Saturday is the Boots versus Badges, finally, baseball game, softball game. From eleven to five, uh, there's three games, right? Yep, and tickets are just five dollars. Can't beat that for three games. And then, right after that, at, from five to ten, is the Washington, Washington Street Music Festival. And that's free, so, hopefully, there's a lot of people out for both events, especially for the Boots versus Badges, since it is raising money for the K-9 unit.
Counselor?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, this Sunday, yesterday, we had a, an event at the Moose Club for local law enforcement, and, uh, it was, uh, put together by Larry Kiesel, and, uh, who's a member of the Moose. And, um, he just, uh, he and the rest of the, uh, members of the Moose wanted to thank, uh, law enforcement for all they do, and let them know that they've, in Larry's words, "We've got your back." One of the things that got left out of the, the presentation was a letter from the Director General of the Moose, and, uh, they gave it to me and asked me if I would present it at the, the council meeting. And I'll, I'll shorten it just a little bit. It says, "The thank yous that I notice the most, though, are the ones that never come, when we're too busy with our own lives, our own plans, and our own tunnel vision. When what it is in, uh, in it for me becomes greater than what is happening in my own community. I am so very thankful that those gathered here this Sunday are concerned with our community, concerned with one another, and caring enough to come together to say thank you to our men and women of law enforcement. This is an expression of our deepest appreciation for a job well done and one lived under the incredible scrutiny. The law, uh, the loyal order of the Moose and the, uh, women of the Moose, want to, uh, the protectors of peace and justice, to know that we support you, we look to you to help lead our communities in strength and unity, and we are praying for you every day. But today's, uh, today, the words "thank you" are being spoken with sincerity and as an encouragement to you to continue the good fight. We know you have our backs, uh, please know that we have yours as well. God bless, very much appreciation." I can't read his, can't read his first name, but his last name's Hal, uh, Director General of the Moose. Uh, we did, uh, it was a, it was a wonderful presentation. They, uh, all the local law enforcement departments got certificates of appreciation, and, um, uh, I handed out, uh, a lot more blue light bulbs to, uh, folks there, and we raised a couple hundred dollars for the K-9 unit, so it was a, a good afternoon, had a, had a good time. The mayor was there and, uh, read a proclamation, and it was greatly appreciated on that for the members of the Moose. The, uh, I have one other thing, and that is, uh, you honored Braden Hill tonight, and I wish he hadn't left yet because I just wanted to make a point. Braden Hill, Jeff Healan, former mayor, Mike Edwards, former mayor, Tim Scott, former, former mayor, Danny Lutnager, former police chief, all from the class of seventy-five.
'Cause that's how he rolls. Uh, I just wanted to, again, say thank you for showing up with the blue lights, and, uh, uh, I, I've got somebody that's mad at you because they said Tim Scott bought all the blue lights in Des Moines County. I said, oh, no, he didn't stop there, he went over to Illinois, he went to Des Moines, but, uh, that's the little joke that we have going. But, uh, when you commit to something, you go all in, and it's appreciated, and it was good seeing you there. Uh, I just wanna also thank Jerry Park's granddaughter, uh, for making this, uh-oh, it's upside down, for making this. It says, "We love diving at the Dankworth Park Pool." Jack Fields and Ruby Fields, I guess they both went, they went in tandem at concert on this, so, uh, appreciate the artwork, it's fantastic. So I just wanted to show that off and say thank you to them. Man, you got me tonight, man. You know, I, uh, I, the only place I don't mind crying is, is at home, in front of, uh, the Lord, and my couch, in a church. I don't mind crying before the Lord, but, uh, I don't like to, uh, I don't do that in public. But you really, you really touched me, uh, my future Mayor's Award winner. See it? Mayor Proten?
I did go by the pool on Thursday when they had their free swim day, and there were a little over four hundred, people took advantage of it, and they were all having a great time. People took advantage of it, and they're all having a great time, so that was all good. I did go to the Bees meeting on Friday, and they're very, very concerned about a potential wage law that might be passed, which would require them to pay their players an unbelievable amount of money so they couldn't function anymore. So they wanted the mayor to send a letter. Did you talk about that? Okay. So hopefully that, that'll get taken care of, but I think that's it.
Honorable?
I'll be on KVR, so, on Wednesday, this is my, that's the only thing I really had. What's the dates for, that you're trying to make sure that you, that you hit for the blue lights?
Uh, the, the nationwide is, is August 5th through the 8th. Locally, it's become August 4th through the 11th. And I encourage everybody to go out by Great River Medical Center and take a look there on August 4th. It's, I think it's gonna be pretty spectacular out there.
Otherwise, Friday, actually Friday afternoon, Ms. Debbie has her retirement party out at the, at the library, 3 to 5.
Friday.
Yeah, Friday afternoon, 3 to 5. North Corge Trail, Friday is at.
Friday at noon.
Noon has the ribbon-cutting ceremony. So if you're able to partake in that, that's there available. City staff is, well, in council, you're certainly invited. We're trying to get, we're gonna go to Night at the Bees tomorrow night for the game, so if you were interested in that, we have tickets for, you've got a ticket, good, three bucks a ticket for, for that. We'd love, love to see y'all attend, and whoever from staff is able to make it will be, will be good. We didn't have a tremendous amount, I think we had maybe 20 last year somewhere in that neighborhood, maybe plus or minus, I'm not exactly sure, but just a nice way to just build some, for those that can take advantage to be able to build some time together. And I think that kinda covers it for what I can think of off the top of my head.
Well, if Bob was here, I'd ask him, but he's not.
I move adjourned this meeting.
Kathleen?
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Burlington.
Thank you, council. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.